If I could ever watch the eyes of the county after my new day. Ma tu i, tu i, tu i ya, tu i roa, tu i wa roa, tu i ea roa, tu i wa roa. Tu i te hereta, ka roa kapo, ka roa te au. Tu i ea itu muka takata, takia mai, ea huaiki nui, ea huaiki roa, ea huaiki ma ma ma. We listen to the bird, as it calls, encouraging us to bind. Bind above, embed below. Joined together, outside and embedded inside the bonds of life. May there be peace on land, day and night. From our homelands, the ancient homelands, all ancestral lands. As we emerge into the day, into the light, may we go forward in peace. He honore he koro he kitiato, ma naaro, kiti fena fakaro paikina pa takatakato. Honour and blessings to the Almighty, peace on land and goodwill to all people. He uwa, mai atu anoau ke akue i tenei wa. E fakati fena mai, koena kuaha o te kai me ai tivo a taato. Ma anoato ke akue i roto tenei noe ki tenei fakamoi meti. Ma uano hoki ke akue ki muatu aroarot i tenei ra. So at this time, we ask for the blessings of the council, councilors, and that they may be bestowed upon them the goodwill and unity that will bring benefits to the whole community. Amen. So. Tenei emehi fakatau, e koutou, roa raka tere ma, a koromaa rako ema. A ngamema hau, kaikoni hera au, a mea koutou nei hekima aano ki tenei turanga. A teneara koutou, roa ma kaire mai ki roto tenei fare, e roa te koe papa nengongoa taato i te hapori. Ke akue, e koromatu a lek, Aaron, ngamahi atu ke akue kanu e ngamahi. Mai kaato ke akue i tenei wa, e to tokuana toa mahi pa'itika ina ra kue ki mai. Mete koromatau a tōrō, ke akue Christine, ngamahi ke akue i tenei wa. Koutou kaato, whanau tohtoka, huri noo o te rūmanai, nga karangatana ma kaato o tenei mihia tu. O te i tenei ra, etika ki mihia tu ki arātou, kūwehi atu ki kōna te huna huayi. E mawana tohtaku nei fakaro ki arātou haire moima i koe ki ma. A no, tōrēra kanu te koe taku na ka ki mihia tu ki a koutou te kōnehera. So just a great honour to stand here and be invited to welcome the new councilors, those new and those returning, to your inaugural meeting of the council in a special meeting to, of course, the mayor-elect, Aaron, and deputy mayor Christine, and to all the whanau, tohtoko, all the family members and friends who've come along on this special occasion. So we bless your work as you go forward, because we're all going to benefit from it. You know, we had to cheer for Ha, Kea Maya, Kea Manuha Nui. So that means be strong, be bold, and be steady fast in your work. Go to the back.
Tēnā koutou kaatoa, e hui hui mai nei. Koutou ma ema ana te mana fenua o Otipoti nei, tēnā rāwa koutou moa ngamahi. Ki a firi firi amātou o te kōnehera, e te hapori nei ki te fakarato ia koutou. E etika ana ki a mihia a ki a fakahokiā na mihia. E te tumuaki ina kaai mahi, tēnā koutou. Ki aku hoa maki o te kōnehera, tēnā koutou, no mai. Aku mihia ki a koutou, ma kua fakarato ki kō nei, kua haire ki wahi kei, ki o rāka kaato, koutou. Koutenōrō, nakutenōrō, kaora ait īui. Ki a fae hua ia mātou mahi.
To all those gathered here, greetings. To the mana fenua representatives of the community of Otipoti, thank you for your welcome. I and my fellow councillor-elect colleagues are chosen to serve here by the Dunedin community. It's appropriate to be welcomed by you and acknowledge that in return. But to the chief executive and staff, greetings, and to my councillor colleagues, greetings and welcome. To those who have served in this place and have passed on or moved on, salutations and thank you. May our work together be fruitful. Kia ora.
I'd just like to welcome you all here, to the whanau friends and family, here to support your people today in this meeting, which has steeped in tradition Dunedin City Council. First to begin, I'll just note apologies. It's noted that there's an apology that's been received from councillor Andrew Wiley. And declarations of interest, members are reminded of the need to stand aside from decision-making should a conflict arise between your role as an elected representative and any private or other external interests you may have. Kia ora taato, I would like to welcome you to the inaugural meeting of the Dunedin City Council for the 2019-2022 triennium. As chief executive of the council, it's my great pleasure to now undertake the formal and traditional installation of the mayor of Dunedin. Members will make their declarations by section seven, clause fourteen of the Local Government Act 2002. Your worship. Your worship, you have been elected as mayor of the city of Dunedin. It's now my privilege and pleasure to invest you with the insignia of your office.
I, Aaron Hawkins, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as mayor of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987, or any other act.
May I call your attention to the meaning of the word mayor? It is simply the anglicised version of the Latin word major, meaning great. You may therefore consider yourself as the city's first citizen, elected by the people of Dunedin, one of the world's great small cities. The office of mayor is widely regarded as the highest honour with which a city can bestow one of its citizens. The office carries with it the requirement to watch over, advocate for and look after all the people of Dunedin, not just sectoral interests. In Dunedin, an essential part of the mayoral tradition is the wearing of the robes of office and the use of regalia. The robes are not intended to glorify the individual, rather they are the uniform of office to be worn in respect and honour of the people to whom you serve. The wearing of the robes and the chain of office play an effective part in ensuring that the functions of office, both business and ceremonial, are conducted with dignity, credit to the council and honour to your community. This robe with which I now invest you is therefore the outward invisible sign of the distinction, favour and authority with which Dunedin cities have conferred upon you by electing you as their mayor. The chain and the medallion which I will place upon your shoulders has a threefold significance. It's a mark of distinction and favour, like the robe. It's a symbol of service to the people and by the central placement of te mana fakaronu, the piece of ponamu now contained in the chain, it is a symbol of the enduring partnership between council and kaia takia. The chain then is to remind you that you are also the servant of the people and it will be your duty at all times to serve them to the utmost of your power and ability. The chain's made of gold, does nothing mean in its composition precious metals must be guarded with care. In like manner, you are to guard and defend the trust and confidence which your fellow citizens have placed in you. The Dunedin City mural train, which chain which portrays the city crest in gold and enamel, was originally a gift from the Dunedin Chamber of Cumulus in 1909 and the links were purchased by or on behalf of most of the previous mayors and are so inscribed. Each subsequent mayor to the present time has added a link. The hat, which I now place before you is made so it points both ways, both forward and backward. This is to remind you that while you look forward to the future, you are also to profit from the experience which comes from looking back to the past. And the white gloves which I place in your hand signify the cleanliness of democracy. It will be your duty to preserve the traditions of your office and to behauphold with dignity the good name and reputation of Dunedin city. And when your term of office expires, to hand over to your successor the affairs of the city in unsullied condition.
Kia ora koutou, I will now call each elected member up to swear their oaths, starting with the deputy mayor Christine Gary, who I've appointed under the powers granted me via the Local Government Act.
Ko'a ho, ko Christine Peter Gary, e o ati ana ka faia ho ite pono mo te tē to keke, e ronga hoki te mautanga kai mai nei o aku pūkenga, o aku fakatau hoki, ki a fakatutuki, ki a mahia no hoki, ita mana fakaihaire, ta mana fakatau. Maina momo mahi, kua uhi a ki ronga io, ki a fifi paanga, mo te takawa o Otipoti. Hei kaikoni hera, o te kōnehera arohi o Otipoti, e ai hoki. Ki te tōre kauana tanga a tāio, e roa mano marua. Ki te tōre kauana tanga a tāio, fakapai mete hui. Kotahi mano, e i waro, waru te kō ma fitu, me etahi ture ana, ano ra nei.
Sophie Barker.
I, Sophie Elizabeth Barker, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987, or any other act.
David Benson Pope.
I, David Henry Benson Pope, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987, or any other act.
Rachel Elder.
I, Rachel Anne Elder, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987, or any other act.
Douglas Hall.
I, Douglas Wayne Hall, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skills and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information Act, Meetings Act, 1987, or any other act.
Carmen Hulahan.
I, Carmen Hulahan, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987, or any other act. And I should say I'm Carmen Veronica Hulahan because that was my granny's name and the next generation as well.
Marie Loefiso.
Ko'a ho, ko Marie Evo Te Laufiso, e o ati ana ka faia ho ite pono mete to keke. E ronga hoki ite mūtunga ke mai nei o aku pūkenga. O aku fakatau hoki ki a fakatutuki, ki a mahia no hoki ite mana fakaihaire, te mana fakatau me nga momo mahi. Kua uhi a ki ronga io au, ki a fifi paanga. Mo te takawa o Otipoti hei kaikoni hera, o te kōnehera arohe o Otipoti. E ai hoki ki te ture kauana tanga a tāio, o te tō rua mano marua. Ki te ture kauana tanga a tāio, fakapai mete hui, o te tō tahie mano. Ma waru te kō ma fitu, me etahi ture ana ra nei.
Mike Lord.
I, Mike Lord, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information Act and Meetings Act 1987, or any other act.
Jim Omeli.
Ko James Paul Omeli Toka Ingawa. I declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987, or any other act.
Jules Raddick.
I, Jules Vincent Raddick, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987, or any other act.
Chris Staines.
I, Christopher John Staines, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, the Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987, or any other act.
Lee Vandervass.
I, Lee Vandervass, solemnly declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of Dunedin city, the powers, authorities, duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002, Local Government Official Information and Meetings Act 1987, or any other act.
Steve Walker.
I, Steve Alan Walker, declare that I will faithfully and impartially and according to the best of my skill and judgment, execute and perform in the best interests of the city of Dunedin, the powers, authorities and duties vested in or imposed upon me as a member of the Dunedin City Council by virtue of the Local Government Act 2002 and Local Government Official Information Act and Meetings Act 1987, or any other act.
Item eight on the agenda is welcomed by the mayor. Kia ora koutou, ka' minui ki koutou, kiora. I'd like to start by acknowledging the people of Ka'itahu, Wa'atah and Kati Mamoi as manafenua of this place and mehi te you edwur again for your warm welcome, kiora. Welcome to the inaugural meeting of the Dunedin City Council for this triennium. To council colleagues, staff, members of the public and our friends in the fourth estate, welcome. Thank you to everyone who gave me their support to be the next mayor of Dunedin, but as you've just heard, we've all now made a commitment to serve everyone in this city. It's a funny old beast, local government. Every three years, we ask our community to decide who they want to represent them and a new city council is formed. But it's less of a reset than it is a fresh start because the new council isn't presented with a clean slate. Successive councils have worked with our community to build a shared set of goals and ambitions for our social wellbeing, our natural environment, economic development, arts and culture, parks and recreation. This council inherits significant projects that are set to deliver on these ambitions. The central city upgrades and tertiary streets projects, significant flood mitigation work in South Dunedin, the South Dunedin Library, the Moskew Pool, supporting cheaper bus fares and encouraging more inner-city residential development. To say nothing of what is happening outside our direct control. The central city rebuild of the Dunedin Hospital, a major capital works programme at the University of Otago, the completion of the shared path to Port Chalmers. And some sit between those two worlds, like the waterfront development. Looking around the table at who our community chose to represent them over the next three years, the impression I get is that our community are comfortable with the direction that we're heading in. But building on that momentum won't be without its difficulties. For the first time in generations, Dunedin is a growing city. That brings with it challenges, particularly in transport and in affordable housing, and through all of that, ensuring that the solutions we come up with support a just transition to a zero-carbon city. So, we have no small task ahead of us. It's an all-hands-on-deck type situation and I'm looking forward to this council getting stuck in. Our community has once again delivered us a breadth of experience from a broad range of backgrounds to do just that. From that, I've appointed a mix of continuity and new energy to head up our standing committees, with deputy chairs to assist them in what will be a significant workload over the triennium. This work we've offered ourselves up for isn't easy and nor is it always conducive to healthy work-life balance. I want to acknowledge the families, whanau and friends who also give so much of their time, support and sacrifice into enabling our elected members to be as effective as they can be. To those of you here in person, thank you. To those unable to make it and hear in spirit or tuning in through the mists of time and space to the recording of this occasion, I thank you to you too, especially mum. Finally, to our newly minted councillors, I look forward to three years of us working together in a forum that provides for the range of views present in our community in a constructive and collegial fashion. Ko'ae matse feke, matse uraroa, kiora. Item nine is an acknowledgement of a retiring councillor to record the council thanks for the services given by Damian Newell, indefatigable cheerleader of this city in the present and a man with a vested interest in the sustainability of its future. I'll move that the council records its sincere thanks to Damian Newell for the loyal and conscientious service he gave the Dunedin community as a member of the Dunedin City Council for three years during the period 2016 to 2019. Seconded councillor Benson-Pope. Anyone wants to speak to the motion? Councillor Benson-Pope.
Thank you, your worship. I'd like to add my personal thanks to a very hard-working and energetic councillor. I think his energy and his bright ideas, really good bright ideas, will be missed. But knowing Damian, I'm sure that he won't be backward in making sure that we remember a lot of really quite exciting projects that he's brought to the table for council to consider.
Thank you. Further speakers? Councillor O'Malley.
I had the pleasure of working with Damian on a number of committees and he was a fantastic contributor to those committees. And I want to also concur with Councillor Benson-Pope that we'll miss him and I hope that he will contribute to the city and the other things that he does around the place and look forward to working with him in that capacity.
Councillor Houlihan.
Yes, I'd like to agree with the councillors. I think Damian has been excellent for the city and he will be missed.
Councillor Gary.
I'd like to add that councillor Newell was a very caring member of our team and he was always concerned about the wellbeing of his colleagues.
Councillor Lord.
Yeah, I'd just make the comment that I had the privilege of sitting next to Damian for the last three years and while this is not normally a fun environment, the banter that went on between us was often a lot more fun than it should have been for considering the place we were.
Any further speakers? There being none, I'll put all those in favour. Those against? That's agreed. Item ten, acknowledgement of retiring community board members. I'll move from the chair that council records its sincere thanks to Peter Governor from the Saddle Hill Community Board and Rose Stringer Wright of the Waikawari Coast Community Board for their service across the years 2016 to 2019. Seconded councillor Gary. Any speakers? Councillor Gary.
Yes, Peter was a member of the Saddle Hill Community Board from 2016 to 19 and he was a member of Keep Dunedin Beautiful. During that time, he was a very active board member, helping out at civil defence emergencies. An example was when a property in Ocean View had a slip, Peter was there along with the rest of the board, helping with the clean-up. He was instrumental in working with the Fairfield School to have murals painted and installed at the Fair Play Street Playground, which has beautified the area wonderfully. And he was very community-minded and a great asset to the board. He will be missed by all.
Thank you. Councillor O'Malley.
I had the pleasure of working with Rose Stringer-Wright on the Waikawari Coast Community Board and she was a great contributor to that board and very loyal resident of Karatani and representing Karatani for the Waikawari Coast area. She will continue, I'm sure, to contribute to that community as well and I look forward to working with her again as a member of this community. Thank you.
Further speakers? There being none, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. Those against? That's agreed. Item eleven, chairs and committee structure. I'll move that the council notes the appointment of councillor Christine Gary as deputy mayor, notes the new committee structure attached to the report, notes the appointment of the chairs, deputy chairs and various councillors appointed to those committees, subcommittees and community boards, and approves the delegations for the hearings, grants and order and risk subcommittees as detailed in attachments, noting e the committee structure and delegations manual will be presented to the December council meeting for adoption. Seconded councillor Benson-Pope. Would anyone like to speak to the motion? There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour? Those against?
No, recorded please.
Vote recorded against for councillor Vandervass. Thank you. Item twelve, appointment of the acting deputy mayor. There are occasions when both the mayor and deputy mayor are out of Dunedin at the same time and it's necessary to have an elected member designated to deal with any issues that arise during these times. I'd like to appoint an acting deputy mayor during any joint absences for this triennium and move that the council appoint councillor David Benson-Pope as acting deputy mayor for any joint absences of the mayor and deputy mayor during this triennium. Seconded councillor Gary. Any discussion? There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Item thirteen, appointment of representatives on the Zone Six Committee of Local Government New Zealand. And I will move that council appoint myself, councillor Christine Gary and councillor Chris Staines as the representatives to the Local Government New Zealand Zone Six Committee. Maybe I shouldn't do that. Would someone like to move that? Move councillor Benson-Pope, thank you. Do we have a seconded? Seconded councillor Lofiso. Any discussion? There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. Item fourteen, elected member remuneration for 2019-20. I'll move that the council approves the remuneration as set out on the order paper. A seconded councillor Staines. Any discussion? Councillor Vandervass.
There's been a tradition for a long time now that chairs of the major committees who basically have the opportunity to prejudge agendas before they come to their respective committees and they have the opportunity to have input into those agendas. And obviously, there is some extra work involved in doing this. However, I believe that it's a mistake to significantly increase remuneration in respect of chairs' positions. I don't believe that the extra work involved actually justifies having a seriously different remuneration from other equally elected councillors and that it tends to create an 18B team situation on council, which I think has been anti-democratic and unhelpful in the past. I recognise that this is not a new situation. The amount of difference is more, but then that's because the pool is more anyway. And I don't expect that I will influence anybody's decision in changing this particular decision to significantly remunerate more than $14,000 each year chairs. In my opinion, chairs should be a position which is sought because of the responsibility and because of the extra work that's available and that the amount of extra work actually doesn't justify a significant change in remuneration. So, simply for those reasons and not for any personal reasons at all, I believe that it's not an ideal situation that an original suggestion that all councillors elected equally be remunerated equally is something which I would have favoured. I accept that that's probably not going to happen, but I wanted to make the case in this situation anyway. It's my only opportunity. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Further speakers? There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour? Those against?
No, recorded please.
That's agreed with councillor Vandervass noting his vote against. Item fifteen is the meeting schedule for the remainder of the calendar year 2019. Ms Graham, anything you want to add at this point? No?
I'll move that the council adopt the meeting schedule for the remainder of the year, noting that a 2020 meeting schedule will be prepared for consideration at the 10 December meeting, noting that community boards will consider and confirm their own meeting schedules. Seconded councillor Gary. Any discussion? Those in favour?
Those against? That's agreed. Item sixteen, local government legislation briefing for the inaugural council meeting in advance of this meeting to save the patience of those in attendance at this meeting. Councillors have been briefed on the legislation that is required. And so, unless there's anything staff want to add at this point, I'll move that council note the advice regarding key legislation that applies to members of council, its committees and community boards. Seconded councillor Gary. Any discussion? There being none, I'll put it. All those in favour? Those against? That's agreed. And that brings us to the conclusion of the inaugural meeting. Thank you for your attendance and your patience and please do join us for afternoon tea in the foyer. Kia ora.